Soon.
I don't know.
You ready?
Actually, can you just, can you give me that?
Thank you. Today being Tuesday, April 25th, 6:00 PM, I convened today's Select Board meeting in Memorial Hall here in Town Hall. Will you join me if you are capable and standing for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A reminder to everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Westboro TV. With that, do we have anyone here for open forum today? Hello, please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Gary Berlin from Bowman Lane. And I also serve as the town sander pond warden, one of the two remaining wardens, which we need to address. The reason I'm here is to bring to the attention of the Select Board the problems that we're having at the Sander Pond Conservation Area and Minuteman Park. Most of it's due to an increase in general use. We've made it a nice private park area or public park area, and we see an awful lot of people up there, both residents and non-residents, an awful lot of non-residents. With that, it brings more problems with non-residents walking their dogs in and around the watershed area. We have more non-residents fishing. We have an awful lot of people just generally using the park for a dog-walking area at night. We're coming up on the summer months, and every summer I get three or four instances where people are swimming in there or bathing. There's always people waiting. And I ask them to, you know, come out of the water. There's no swimming allowed here. It's a public water supply. Oh, I didn't know that. The signage is, the signage needs to be improved up there. Fires and grills, as the summer gets hotter coming up, there's an awful lot of people on Saturday and Sunday afternoons especially. They're up there in groups, a grill or two going. It's a watershed area. It's pine trees. The ground is covered with thick pine eagles. It could just go into a big major fire. That would ruin our watershed area. I ask them, put the fire out. Do not dump your calls. You've got to bring them home with you. But there's been many times you go up there and there's piles of jackholes and stuff on the ground. We just can't have that. I, as the one remaining active warden, my son is, but he's too busy to help, we have trouble now with getting proof of residency, just asking people about residency and/or seeing a fishing license. They will give us residency and permits to fishing. It's a state license. It's required by Article 29 that we have the authority to ask for a residency and proof of licensing. I think you've got Article, or copy of Article 29 for reference to look at. We had an issue last week where I had three guys that wouldn't give me the IDs or throw me a fishing license. I couldn't get an EPO officer there, so I called the Westboro Police Department. It took them 45 minutes to get an officer there. I found out later because they called my son to say, what's going on up there? And my son said, well, it's my father. He's the warden. He's probably checking somebody for licenses. What, why? The police department doesn't even know about Article 29. I talked to Deputy Chief Manati, who says most of these guys are two or three years on duty. They don't even know about it. We need to put together a training program, at least a memorandum or something. But he says I don't have the resources to patrol it. I have a lack of manpower. I don't have enough people to do it at the time. We talked about other ways of helping. Maybe we can get the animal control office to do something with it. But again, she serves only half her time here in Westboro. The other half in Crafton. So she has limited time to do it. So it's an issue. I think we need to, and that's why I'm here, is to ask, is it time to review Article 29? I hate to say it, put together a multi-group committee that has the police department, border health, the border health, I talked to them. They're all in there. They don't want to see dogs up there running in the watershed area. It's a problem. If they go to watch the reservoir, the entire area of water is closed off. Absolutely no dogs. And it's a much bigger area to protect and much bigger watershed. They need to do it there. We need to do it there. There's an awful lot of dogs up there. You go up there, I had this one person that last fall had four dogs. I yelled at her across the water. I said, man, you can't have your dogs running loose. They're in the water. They're up on the back end. When they did, she ducked down behind a bush where we could see her. I said, what are you doing? I can see you. Get up, come back over here with the dog, put him on a leash. There was Tales and Trails out of Worcester. They have another group down in Framingham saying Tales and Trails. It's a dog-walking agency out of Worcester that charges $25 an hour to walk a dog. Because you've got four dogs, and it's a town reservoir and in the water. And it's just fine with her. If you go to their website, there's a couple links you had to get through, but I found it. It actually says one of the best places to walk a dog is the Westboro Conservation Area. So I asked the Select Board to look at it. Should we put together a committee to review Article 29? Talk to the police department. What do we do about enforcement? I can't enforce it. One body can't enforce it. We don't even have the authority to say it. Deputy Chief Manati says, he even has trouble with his officers getting identification from citizens unless there's an actual complaint. He has trouble getting identification from people that show up to him. So it's a problem. We need to look at it.
Any questions? It'd be a catch. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for letting us know.
Okay.
So I can look at it and then circle back with you and then with the board and also the chief. Okay.
Basically came, I, just quick correction. I probably spend about a third of my time in Crafton. So it's roughly one-third, two-thirds. I think I have said in the past, if there was one piece of property, I would ban dogs from completely. It is around the reservoir because it's our drinking water supply. But the environmental police is stretched more than than our police. There's like 80 of them for the entire state. So they don't have the time to come up. I don't know how we're going to address enforcement, but at least trying to keep the dogs away from the immediate area is probably a good idea.
And it sounds like maybe some better signage.
We definitely need a better signage. There's only, I think, two signs that say anything about dogs on leash, right, or on electronic collar. There's only two signs that say non-residents, resident fishing only. There used to be a big sign that listed the 10 rules. That's gone. So we need to, we need to look at DPW as more signy than maybe. But that's what I think, it's not just me that's got to look at it. It's everybody. And come up with a better set of rules, regulations, revise them if necessary.
Well, I think Christie will take the lead and then we'll figure out, Christie will take the lead, as she said, and then we'll bring it back to the board for further consideration and discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum tonight? Then we move to the Town Manager's Report.
So the senior needs assessment will be available hopefully in final draft next week. So we will post that available, post that and make it available online, you know, share it widely, and then we'll print out hard copies as needed. Some hard copies will be available at the senior center. We'll put one at the library, making sure that everyone has access to it. And then we'll give you a summary presentation at the May 9th Select Board meeting. We really, at that point, would just kind of talk about overall themes because our intention would be to have a full presentation from UMass Boston, who did the work at a later date. And it would be a separate public meeting where they would do the full presentation, which would be available to anyone to attend. The Fruit Street Bridge, in December, we were informed that the Fruit Street Bridge was, project was delayed due to bedrock found when constructing the foundation. So we've heard that that delay is over and that the bridge is still expected to open now in the fall of this year. And then the website upgrade, there was a kickoff meeting last week. So staff and the vendor are working toward a launch date around the new year.
New calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar.
No pressure.
Capital N, capital Y.
And the finance department, treasurer collector, the fourth quarter real estate and personal property bills are due on May 1st, and water sewer bills are due on May 12th. We have a couple RFPs out, so the Affordable Housing Trust RFP for sale and development of three bale or av, which was released and advertised on April 10th. And then the Public Works Department, an invitation for bids for on-call HVAC maintenance and repair was advertised and scheduled to be released on the 18th. And the Town Clerk's Office, they have over 400 dogs unlicensed from last year. So there's a $5 late fee in effect. Residents are encouraged to call the Town Clerk's Office with any questions. Any residents who have not returned their 2023 street listing should do so no later than May 31st. In the Recreation Department, all the town fields are open for the spring season. The department's continuing their efforts to hire lifeguards to work at Lake Chauncey this summer. Number of applications as far as is encouraging compared to last year. The department is also still accepting applications for counselors to work at the summer playground programs. And Youth and Family Services, the community bingo with the police department was on April 21st, had a great turnout. State Rep. Kate Donahue stopped by to assist in calling bingo. The Youth Commission is looking for two youth voting members for next year. So interested individuals may apply. We're also continuing our search for a Youth and Family Services Director as well as a Town Planner.
Christie, could you tell me what the return of the 2023 street listing is? I'm familiar with the book. I guess I'm not sure what residents are supposed to do with that.
I'm assuming it's the...
That's the census.
The census.
Oh, the census.
Yeah, it's the census.
People and canines living in the residence, party affiliation.
Okay.
If citizens don't return it, they could be removed from the voting rolls after two years.
Okay. I just wasn't familiar.
It populates, so the census populates the street listing.
I understand. Okay, got it.
And I would just add that, you know, the police department also was at the bingo night, and it was well-attended and a lot of good callers there, including myself.
Did you call yourself a good caller?
I did.
You were a caller, I heard.
Yeah.
Only kidding.
So it's a great time. Lots of pizza.
That's it? Actually, sorry, I did want to let the board know about two other things that I hadn't listed. One is that we will be holding, I'm trying to find it here. We're actually going to hold Open Meeting Law, Public Records Law Seminar for boards and committees. So anyone who's on a board or committee, as well as town staff, are invited to attend. And that is May 15? Monday, May 15th, at 6 o'clock in the Great Hall. And that's going to be led by Town Council, our KP Law. And then also, I spoke to Chris Allen, who's trying to set up a ceremony for dedication of the bench to Nahor Rice across the street. And that will be, they're shooting for September 12th. So it's the day of a Select Board meeting at 5 o'clock. So it would be ceremony over there, and then we could come here for the meeting.
Christie, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Children's Mental Health Week proclamation. The Professional Advocacy League is here? Yes, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation to read. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say before?
If you can introduce yourself first. Sorry. Just for the record, we want to get you on TV.
Sure. Hi, I'm Pamela Boz. I actually grew up in Westboro and graduated from Westboro High School. And I work for the Parent Professional Advocacy League, which works to improve mental health care for children across the Commonwealth and support parents as well. We have an office in Worcester, but we're actually moving to Westboro next week, next month.
Awesome.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Where are you moving to?
Lyman Street.
Excellent. Great. Welcome.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Of course.
I would move to support the following proclamation. What, does someone else want to read it or?
I'll read it.
I think he's got it right.
Patrick wanted to do it, so go ahead, Patrick.
I got it right here.
Perfect. So I'll move Patrick reads it.
We're fighting for it.
Thank you.
So proclamation for Children's Mental Health Week. Whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with mental health condition. And whereas good mental health is key, a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week shines the light on this important matter. And whereas research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health conditions among children and youth and the involvement of family members in their care and treatment provide children and youth better opportunities for full and meaningful lives. And whereas early identification and treatment includes timely services and supports for children and youth from a fully integrated team of diverse resources, including their families, physicians, schools, and local communities. And whereas appropriate treatment is family-driven, youth-guided, culturally appropriate, and equitable across varying communities and populations. And whereas appropriately treating the mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of our nation and to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Therefore, the Town of Westboro does hereby proclaim May 7th through the 13th of 2023 as Children's Mental Health Week and urge our citizens, businesses, and organizations to promote this year's theme. Accept, Advocate, Act, Because Awareness Is Not Enough, in order to help increase equitable access to appropriate treatment and support for children, youth, and their families with mental health needs, given this 25th day of April in the year 2023.
Second. All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I just want, over the last several months, I've become more aware of your organization and the great work you do, and so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
All right, vote. Five to zero, five in favor.
Start signing the stammer.
Yeah, go right ahead. All right, next on our agenda is a request to place flag display on the Rotary from the Veterans Advisory Board.
Good evening. I'm Jim Tepper, the Chair of the Westboro Veterans Advisory Board. And I believe you have in front of you our request to put a flag display on the Rotary starting in June 24th, and we'll remove them on July 8th. What was not added to that letter was our fall dates. And I'm going to request that we pencil those in if at all possible. That would be November 4th through November 18th.
Yep. Excellent. Any questions?
No. I would move to approve the flag installation on the Rotary from June 24th, 2023, to July 8th, 2023, and from November 4th, 2023, through 11/18, November 18th, 2023.
Second.
Just, thank you. It's always a beautiful display, and I know the community and visitors appreciate it. So thank you.
If I might, I'm going to ask, you're going to vote first, all right?
You want to get our vote before you say anything? Right, before you say anything, get that vote.
Five to zero, five in favor.
I always say, don't sell after the close. Good sales pitch. I'm wondering if we couldn't begin just having this as an automatic rather than taking up your time each year with this event. I've done this successfully three years without any incident, and it might be something to consider, so let me know what we might want to do.
I'd be happy to delegate that to the Town Manager to take care of. Yeah, yeah.
We can inform the Town Manager of the dates.
Yeah, I think informing the Town Manager of the dates and keeping the dates in the same general timeframe.
And I'm going to steal 30 seconds of airtime and put an infomercial out through the great work of Christie and her staff, Kim and others, as well as the DPW. We're now going to be adding brackets to the light poles to expand the capacity for veteran banners. So we are now in the process of looking for veteran applications. They're available at the VSO office. They're available online. And those listening might be able to pass that word. So any way we can put that word out, we'd appreciate it. Thank you again.
That's great, because I know that I've had people inquire, and I knew that we were putting new brackets up, so now I can send them to the website because I know there are people interested.
Absolutely, absolutely. Everything's up there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If the board is ready to delegate it, you should have a motion.
I'll move to delegate the approval of the flags on the Rotary for the July 4th and November dates going forward.
Second. Just a question on it. Is that something we should maybe, because of policy change, where we just say, add it and it's a policy to the two weeks around the particular time periods? That way it's in stone and it just happens?
Well, I think we had talked about that when we brought it forward, but the board wasn't comfortable. So if you delegate it, you don't need to, I mean, it's up to you. It would be a separate agenda item or you can just delegate it and then we just move on.
I guess technically then future boards, if they're interested, could undelegate it without it being a...
They could also change the policy. I mean, we had talked about it before, and the board didn't want to do it. So you can just simply do the delegation under this agenda item and then move forward.
I'm comfortable with the delegation, and then we just ask Christie to let us know when it comes up as part of a Town Manager update.
Terrific.
So just think we need to vote? Five to zero.
Okay.
Not that we don't want to see you, but.
I think that was vice versa.
And don't forget, if you have other items to come for open forum, or send us an email and ask us to announce it as part of issues and correspondence.
Excellent. Next, we have the request to place a display for Memorial Day. I don't know if Ms. Clark was coming.
So we don't think that she's coming, but this is also a request that the board hears, has heard annually, which is to place the poppy display in the horse trough where that, that's on the island across from Ferris and Red Barn. You have in your pocket a photo, but I think we've all seen the display previously.
So I would move to approve for the installation of a Memorial Day poppy display from May 23 to 2023 to May 30th, 2023.
Do you want to add, to have Christie maybe do this one too, since it comes before us every year?
I think my only concern honestly is that the Veterans Advisory Board is a town committee.
That's fine. That makes sense.
Yeah, so I think. And we're very familiar with Mrs. Clark, but if she transitions that, I think, yeah, at this point. In fact, I think we're just now on a pattern where we're getting the requests like kind of in advance, and so I think we've got a good thing going.
So all those in favor? Five to zero, five in present.
Appreciate the work that she does to get those out there and her team. Nice compliment, so.
Tremendous display. I understand from the picture she sent us, dog not included.
I felt bad. I didn't want the dog saying that the whole time.
Next, approve the Network Systems Administrative Job Description and Amendment to Classification Plan.
Yep. So this is actually to approve the job description for a new position that was approved and actually presented to you during the budget process through the IT Department. Another outcome of our information technology assessment. Very excited to get this position posted to begin on July 1st. You have the job description in your pocket. I can let Kim and Mark answer any questions or...
This is what I'm very happy. We have a lot of technology people on the, to ask all the questions.
I do have a couple questions if I can. So I guess, I think the only area that I'm a little bit concerned with in the job, as documented right now, is under certifications and licenses and registrations, there are several very specific computer schools that are listed with VMware, Firewall administration, routing, Microsoft Server, operating systems, et cetera, that in that industry, the desire is really to have those certifications, whether it's a CCA or whether it's VCE certification, et cetera. And I'm just curious if we should list out some more certifications. Not that we necessarily have to have that individual have every one of those, but that there are some certifications.
How they desired or something.
Exactly, yeah. I was just a little surprised it wasn't there.
Yeah, no, I had made one mention of the certificates as being...
You want to just introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, Mark Stockman, IT. Hello?
Thanks, Mark.
Mark Stockman, IT Director. The, there is, I didn't list out all the certifications that are desired. That's a, it's a good idea, but I had put in the, and one of the places...
Under computer skills, you actually list all of the things that I think Patrick just mentioned.
My concern about listing specific certifications is they change constantly. And if they're, Microsoft has changed the name and the structure of their certifications twice in the last three years. So a generic line that says, you know, appropriate, you know, industry vendor certifications is determined by the manager would be...
I have never seen a job's description like this without a listing of certifications.
Where we list certifications on ours, we typically interpret those as those are the minimum requirements. And I think part of the rationale for listing them where they are is recognition that those things change and evolve and the idea that these are what we're looking for folks to have, but depending on where we put them.
The distinct difference is computer skills is somebody who has a skill versus certification is somebody who's actually been tested against that skill. And that, in this particular position, in this particular industry, that certification in my mind is key. It's very important, especially the networking and routing piece of it and the firewall piece of it because that's protecting our environment. So I'm just, while they may change, and I've had a few of these certifications in the past, and they certainly do change, not quite as frequently as you just mentioned, but they have changed. That to me is less important than the fact that I think we should at least be requesting these certifications during the process.
I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to having a preference. I think, as we've experienced, I think as you all watched, we are having a very difficult time recruiting. We're not alone in that, especially in a municipal government. And so I would just caution that if we list out certifications, we might actually sort of scare people away from applying. Whereas now it is listed in there, and it also says under education experience, education, training certifications. So it is a preference that we would obviously, you know, hold up as something... So, it is a preference that we would obviously, you know, hold up as something, as making someone preferable to someone else. So, it is listed in there. I mean, I'm not, I just think that we should be cautious about making it seem like you're not qualified if you don't have these specific certifications.
Could we put something in under computer skills at the end there, just saying industry certifications in these skills preferred, or something like that?
I will just tell you all that you're not going to get a candidate who has every one of these. So, that's just, it's highly unlikely to get that person.
Right.
But, you know, there's four, or five, six different certification, different types of certifications, and even with inside of those, there's different levels of certifications across these. So, you may get individuals who have, are very strong in networking, and have some Microsoft basic certification type certification. And that's probably a good, acceptable candidate for this position. But I think it's important to show that, you know, first of all, we have knowledge of what the certifications are in these industries, instead of just saying should have knowledge of this. This, to me, is a little bit, pardon my wording here, a little bit fluffy. You, I, you know, we know what Microsoft thirty-sixty-five is, it's Excel, it's Word, et cetera. That's not, we're looking for, we're looking for somebody who can administer this environment.
You just blew my job application, thanks.
Sorry. So, I mean, we're looking for people who can troubleshoot this and can identify troubles before they happen and be proactive on it, so.
Can we, can we add some language under, I mean, I agree with you, I was surprised that only driver's license is required in that line, so I do see where there's reference in other aspects, but maybe something under that line that speaks to industry certifications to relevant software, operating systems, or something like that, highly desired, or something like that?
I was, I was in a roundtable of technology companies this week talking about recruiting retention, and one of the discussions was not including specific certifications in job postings. There are actually studies that it's harder to find candidates.
I'm not saying, sorry.
So, saying something along, you know, saying, again, keeping it, you know, relevant, you know, relevant industry and vendor certifications is preferred, gives, sets the expectation that they have some certifications, or in the process of, and/or in the process of getting others. And it leaves discretion as to how you weight the certifications and evaluate certification, how long ago they've had it, as well as, you know, their industry, you know, their years of actual practical experience. I know people who hold very high-level Microsoft certifications, who I would never, ever, ever let them touch anything for real, because they've never actually held a field technology position. And I've got, I know people who've, you know, worked in the trenches and can fix most networks with their eyes closed and two hands tied behind their back, and don't have a single certificate on the wall. So, setting the expectation is a preference, but allowing the discretion to weigh each candidate and which certifications they have, and how Mark feels it applies to the job, I think, is the way to go.
Well, and that's why, under education and experience, we always list that it's a combination of education and experience, understanding that someone might have very high-level practical experience, and maybe not a specific degree or certification.
Streak versus book smarts. I mean, I agree with, the education piece of it makes total sense to me in regards to how that's worded, but I just found it odd that even at a minimum, I mean, I'd love to hear, Mark, your thoughts, even at a minimum, and if you just listed out the baseline certifications, you know, the lowest levels Cisco certification, or, you know, I'm not sure what type of firewalls we have, Nokia, or whoever it is, you know, certification, or VMware has multiple different levels of certifications. Here's the base minimum that is desirable versus required.
I just think you get yourself, sorry, I just think that now you're going to be revising this, or it's going to be outdated, because what happens if those change?
Those aren't going to change in the next year.
But I also think
But we don't bring this back every year, though.
Are we comfortable with Alan's proposal?
Well, go ahead, say it again, I'm hearing. It would be that, in fact, under education experience, where it says certifications, it could be relevant industry and vendor certifications. And that sets it, or it can be a separate line.
Could we put that under certifications?
Certifications must have valid driver's license, and then say relevant vendor and industry certifications preferred.
Yeah, right.
And then, and then your candidates will actually, you know, list, right?
Right.
And part of the discussion in my group
It says preferred, but it still gives him
Him the
Well, you want that flexibility.
It says they're preferred, but he can decide which ones hold. Exactly. I mean, again, like, you know, somebody could be really strong in Microsoft and weak in networking, and Mark's going to make a decision as to whether or not that is the right candidate versus somebody who's got the exact opposite, perhaps. So, that's fine, that gives us that flexibility.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I have no problem hiring someone with certifications if they have them. Yeah, I have no problem with the language that have been absolutely not.
Thank you for indulging me on that one. I have one other question. It's, it's often implicit, where it says handle level two and level three help desk escalations. There's nothing explicit here, and I don't know if you need this individual to potentially cover level one help desk on occasion, or also be, you know, available for the rare emergency, right? So, there may be times, you know, particularly as we've improved efficiency in the relationship between your department, for example, public safety, where if something goes kafue at one-thirty in the morning, on a Sunday morning, you might need this individual to respond, or remote in and assist you.
If you could look at other qualifications, that's typically where we so must be available to accommodate system installations, upgrades, backup functions, and emergencies.
Okay.
Because I was going to say, in that first section, that's like essential duties, and this is the backups, I think it's better fit.
And then there's also a generic line in the beginning, assist the information technology director with various IT projects. That doesn't cover the emergency part of it, but it does cover, you know, like the level one.
If I can, just another question right here, and I don't, I guess I just want to understand better between your position and this position. I'm thinking of, like, you know, we get reports from the fire chief, and we get reports from the police chief in regards to, how are we doing? What's our threat assessment for the community, kind of, right? Same thing applies here, and I'm just curious, is that something that we should see from yourself, from this position? You know, just wondering how we, as a board, are informed as to how we are doing from, you know, threats on the town?
I guess I just, I'm not sure what reports you're receiving from the chiefs that you're speaking to.
Well, I'm just saying, in general, you know, we get things like, you know, we've seen data on crime in Westboro, right? You know, as far as, you know,
Calls.
Calls, all that kind of stuff. It's the same, in IT speak, how many, you know, how many viruses, how many, you know, things are being mitigated, or attacks, denial service attacks that might be happening
So, you wouldn't get that from this position, because this is under Mark. So, Mark, as a director, could provide some data, which you have actually in the past related to our server security audits and things like that. So, continue to do that.
This person would help feed to you that information to support any of that?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to understand.
I'll move to approve the network administrative job description as presented and amended, and to add the position to the town's classification plan.
Second.
So, we should have mentioned, sorry, that the position is an S-six on the classification.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Hire that person tomorrow.
Yes, please do.
July one, July one.
Line to seven, approve amendments to classi- classification plan for council on aging positions, and there are five listed.
So, while Alma's coming up, this, this was a request that came through in the budget process on actually one of our PIR forms, and, but since it actually didn't have an impact on the budget because of the proposed funding source being a grant, it wasn't included in the budget, it wasn't included in the budget numbers. So, it was listed on page twelve of your budget documents, the need for this, and the expectation that Alma would come at a future time tonight to request these additional hours. So, one thing that, you know, that we wanted, that I wanted to mention, is that in the future, this might be something that we would work actually into the budget, particularly the full-time positions.
You're on a roll saying yes, so just keep I'm liking that. I don't want to break your streak. I did send a memo last week, sort of explaining a little, in a little more detail what's been going on. I am thrilled that since we've become fully open and operational, that our numbers, the number of people coming in into the building for things, the number of people, you know, calling for requests, the phone never stops ringing till about three o'clock. And that's, you know, that's a good thing for us, and I'm very happy. We've, we have initiated, taken the initiative to start a few new programs. We've replaced all of our instructors that did not come back after COVID. Like I said, it's, it's been a busy place, and I have to tell you that, having been here forever, this group of people that I'm now working with in my office are a delight, and that's why I haven't retired yet, because I love them. They're doing such a great job. But, you know, this is a part of our formula grant, well, I explained in the memo that our formula grant amount went up because it's based on the number of people over the age of sixty in the community. And as of the twenty, I can't see what these are, I can't see you without them, but I can't see this, so. As of the two thousand and twenty census, we had four thousand six hundred and forty-three people over the age of sixty in Westboro. And that's a big jump. The governor's budget has requested, the current budgets that we're working in has given us twelve dollars per elder, the governor's budget that she put forward, and we were all delighted and surprised, says for fourteen dollars per elder for, starting for July. The, the reason why I have this money that I didn't have before, number one, we have more seniors, but number two, in the past, we paid the staff nurse with it, but we now share the nurse with the Board of Health, which is great. And the outreach aid position hasn't been filled, and I'm not thinking I'm, maybe, maybe I'll fill that at some point, but for right now, I don't really need to. So, Stephanie does an exceptional job all by herself, so we're doing good. We have a lot more volunteers, we have, yeah, it's been, it's wonderful. We're doing really well, so.
No, go ahead and hear, any questions from the
Yep, yep, if you don't mind. So, very supportive of all of these increases, Alma, so thank you for bringing them forward, and I'm glad that the funding is there. I had a couple of questions, and some of them you may be able to answer here, and then others maybe just through Christie, or maybe it's, maybe it's a separate conversation with the board or presentation. So, I'm just curious, for the staff members that you're asking, who like manages their time? Is that you, or is there some, so you're, you're actually managing their time and how they're allocated out in the community? For them, I mean, for the, for our outreach and admin, they're, they're there every day. I mean, that's that. Our handyman currently works one day a week, but his, it's really getting to be too much to just work one day, plus with all the other little projects that he's taken on. Our Asian outreach person, she's been, I mean, she does a great job, and she's just, you know, planning activities and outings for everybody, not just our Asian community, which everybody appreciates. And that, I had originally asked for more hours for that position when we invented it almost ten years ago, but I was denied that. And as far as our homemaker goes, oh, I wish I could give her fifty hours a week. Well, I'm going to get to that. I know. I, you know, so, I'm trying to keep it under the nineteen and under, so we're not like bumping up against benefits and such, but. So, I, I am interested in understanding, again, maybe this is for a separate presentation to the board of understanding what the process is for an individual seeking homemaker services. So, I'll just kind of go through my questions. What is that process? How is eligibility determined? For example, you know, do residents have to be homebound? I'm very aware of staffing shortages on the ASAP side. Oh, yeah. The, that's the service access points for, for elders, which puts more pressure on a program like this that the town provides, because those other caregivers are not available in the community. And so, I'm interested in that criteria, because I think it's important that, you know, our, the public is aware of this. And, and I'm also, you know, the reason why I'm interested is because I was actually surprised that we're only asking for an increase of hours, you know, of two, to your point. And I understand there's, you know, there's a threshold, but do we need more people? Do we need, I think having more data is where I'm going here, more data for us to understand, and maybe this is through the next budget cycle. I can try to explain some of it now. The process for, I mean, we haven't ever had a shortage of home care clients, and generally they come, it comes through people we know, or people who come to the center. The whole intention of the program was a short-term, like, fill-in for a few weeks after you've had surgery, or you broke your leg, or something like that. We have also done, I don't know, half a dozen cases where it was kind of maintenance, so that people needed to be taken a little more care of because they were, so that they could stay in their homes. Unfortunately, because of the situation with home care, especially during COVID, a lot of people, I mean, we've been told recently there's a nine-to-twelve-month waiting list for a homemaker, which, I don't know, I'm not a big housekeeper, but I'd rather clean my house more than once a year, so. So, we've been doing some clustering in the housing complexes, so that she can see more than a couple of people. One of our biggest problems with the, with the housing complexes is there's like one washer and one dryer. Or two washers and two dryers for a hundred and some people, which doesn't really cut it. So, she also takes laundry home with her to do at her house, which I don't necessarily approve of, but she doesn't really have a choice. So, and I appreciate the fact that she'll do that for some people. So, we, like I said, we really, because, I mean, we have contact with an awful lot of people out there, so people are aware. One of the, I mean, the criteria is you can't just have a housekeeper because you don't want to clean your house anymore. You obviously had to have some issue, like I said, you broke something, or you, you know, you were hospitalized, or, you know, you're getting sick, or you're, whatever the situation is. And I checked that, there are no income levels for this, because it is funded through the town, I can't do that. Let's see, what else did you say? And, and who, so who determines eligibility for who's eligible for the service? Usually myself and the outreach case manager. I mean, sometimes she'll be talking to somebody, and she'll come in and say, you know, I think this lady really needs somebody in there a couple of times a month. Generally, in the apartment complexes, we do every other week, or, you know, twice a month. Some people, it just depends on the situation, what they kind of get, and we try to be as, you know, fair and equitable as possible. But right now, we're in a situation where, like I said, there's no, I said to Kim and Christie yesterday, I used to be able to pick up the phone and solve a problem, I can't do that anymore, because there's nothing out there to solve it with, and it's very frustrating. So, just separately, it would be great, and again, didn't, didn't expect you to have this information for this presentation, but the, kind of the number of residents receiving services each month, as, you know, in these different areas, would be, I think, helpful to the, you know, to the board, and I think it speaks to the work that you and your team are doing. So, would love to see that, particularly as we look at data from twenty-one to twenty-two, and now twenty-two, as we're coming, as we've come out of the pandemic. So, again, not, not for you to comment here, but would like to see that. I pulled some numbers together this afternoon. Right now, she's got eight clients, we've got a couple that are on hold, generally she has between eight and twelve. And in the past, like, nine to twelve months, she's had seventeen different clients, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when she's only got fourteen or sixteen hours, it's a lot. So.
Was your request across the board for all of these, or just for that?
Yeah, it is, it's, so I'd be interested in the, how many, you know, how many people the handyman has touched, the Asian I can tell you that, too. In the whole year of two thousand and twenty-two, he saw a hundred and made a hundred and fourteen home visits, and that doesn't include the lock boxes, not the lock boxes, the The key. Batteries, no, the batteries. That doesn't include batteries.
What was the number again? What was the number again? How many?
One hundred and
Hundred and fourteen in two thousand and twenty-two. This year already in, from January to March thirtieth, he's already seen forty-two people. So if we keep up with that pace, yeah, we're talking a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy people. So.
So I just, um, sort of given the questions about data from council on aging and then your questions about IT data, so we do have the performance measures in the budget books. And so it might be helpful, um, that if you, if there are specific things that the board is looking for, that you hear the public is looking for, to, to filter those to me and then we can ask departments to include those in next year's budget. In addition, I mean, in addition to whatever presentation the board's looking for, but I, there are, you know, I'm looking at Alma's budget right now and so she has the number of people who are, have taken classes, so.
Sure.
Obviously, that's not the question you were asking.
I did look there. Because I was like, maybe it's already been answered.
I do think it would be good for, if there's specific data points you're looking for, it would be good for us to incorporate those in the budget books.
And I did pull up, um, the, my senior center card. In twenty nineteen, we had two hundred and twenty-two swipes. Now, I have to preface this by saying we're very vigilant about getting people to sign up for their cards. They don't always remember to swipe them. However, the numbers are good. In twenty twenty, in the month of March, which we kind of lost half of that, um, we had a hundred and sixty-seven swipes. In twenty twenty-two, we had a hundred and seventy and this month in March, we had two hundred and sixty-three.
Good.
And eighty, just for clarification, eighty-three percent of the people who came into the senior center and used the services last year were from Westboro. I know sometimes that's a subject that I get.
Yeah, if you could just, um, flip those numbers over to Christie just so we can see them. I wasn't writing them down.
Yeah, that's fine.
That would be great.
That's fine.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I also did, because I got Shelby's questions earlier, I brought the sheet, um, that lists what the, least, list, this lists what the homemaker can and can't do.
Okay, great, thanks Alma.
You know, she doesn't do daddy work, she doesn't do heavy chore, she doesn't do plumbing and personal care and all that good stuff, but. And careful around the knickknacks.
Yeah, always a challenge, right? Yeah. Anyway, I'm done with my questions, but, so.
Patrick, any questions?
Nope. Nope.
I, I just had one. So, so in looking at this, I think what you've provided us is based on the twelve dollars per.
Elder.
Per elder, so at some point you may come back to us if that fourteen dollar amount is approved by the legislature or?
So we, well, yeah, because next July, if that's approved, we'll know hopefully by September, the way the legislature works sometimes. But, um, if that budget is approved in July, um, then it'll be, it'll be more money. The one thing that, so this year we received a little over fifty-five thousand dollars. Adding these people to, adding these hours for the staff is only taking up about twenty-three and change. There's still money in there for programs for, um, like I just recently, in training, I just paid for eleven members of the staff and some of our volunteers that work in the kitchen just completed their serve safe training. We all passed. Yeah, we were, everybody came into me and said, I think I fonked, I think I fonked. No, 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 everybody passed. And then, um, next month, um, I might as well tell you now, as long as I have your undivided attention. Next month, um, because of the fatal fire that was here, um, in March and then the one that happened a few days later in Hopkinton, I just, I, that just broke my heart. And I, there is absolutely positively no excuse why anybody in this town should not have working smoke detectors in their house. So I'm going to use some of that formula grant money. Um, I've spoken with the chief and the deputy chief and we're going to, um, sort of blanket the town with this information. If you don't have smoke detectors and you can't afford them, we will help you. If you can't afford them and you can't get them put up, we will come help you. If they're not in the right place and you took the batteries out because, you know, every time you cook a pork chop, it goes off, we'll, we'll, we'll move it for you to a better location. But I just don't ever want to see this happen again here, so.
Thank you. Good, perfect.
Would you like a motion?
But that's some of the other things we're spending the money on, some training and such, so.
Sean, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to amend the classification plan to reflect increased hours effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three for the council on aging positions of outreach case manager, administrative assistant, Asian outreach worker, homemaker and handyman as presented.
And just so the board's aware, the, for outreach and outreach case manager and administrative assistant, those are union positions, so it's subject to impact of bargaining.
Second. All those in favor? Five to zero? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have approve amendments to economic development coordinator job description and amendment to classification plan. We have someone here.
So, uh, so Fred is here, but, um, this request is, um, is to promote uh, the economic development coordinator position, which, uh, is not currently a department head position, um, to a department head level position. This has been a, uh, this has been a position that has sort of evolved over time. I think some of you remember that it started, I think it was a fifteen hours a week position, uh, eventually moved to a full-time position. Zach Bagnner is our, I think, third person in that position and I think has really shown, uh, shown us, you know, what that position can be. And, and so I think we feel really strongly that he should be elevated to a department director position within the community development department. Um, and so the updates to the job description, I'll let Fred and Kim, uh, discuss uh, as well as the change to the classification plan.
Sean, I have just a question. So when I always look at these, and I know you mentioned that it's, it's kind of position and person and separating the two. So I know this is not a knock on Zach, whatever, but I just, the question, I think I know the answer, but just to ask it is, because of the work and I, I approve of all the changes, that this is, it's really the position, we believe deserves that. So we're not adjusting the position because of the person, we're adjusting the position because it's what the job is doing and that job description, um, rises to level of being a department head. It just so happens we have a person in there that would move up with the change.
Yeah, yes, and so my comment was really that I think Zach has expanded that, the scope of that position and, and shown what this position really should be doing or can be doing, so.
Perfect.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question? So would the coordinator position description still exist?
No. That, that position would not, would no longer exist.
So if this, if economic development as a function grew larger, we would create new job description, descriptions for people who would report to him as director?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Oh, I thought it was very, very well done and it's, it's, I knew a lot of stuff going on, but reading through it's a lot more and I, I think it's great. I think it's, it's what we want, it's what we've envisioned when we first created the part-time position. It's really grown into that and it's an important role, um, for us and I think will continue to be an important role.
I'll just say I'm supportive of the change. I did have just one question based on the previous conversation. Um, I noticed, uh, no license is required, um, no driver's license is required. I didn't know why we delineate or differentiate that between.
It is.
It is required.
Certificates, license and registration.
The blue one.
And then new version.
That was the old one. It wasn't required before.
Okay, yeah, good, good. Sorry, I didn't scroll down far enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Was there a comment we're waiting? I'm sorry, was there a comment where, Kim, were you going to provide some information on the impact of the job classification or some? I thought Christie said.
Uh, I can do that. The, so the position would move from, um, uh, each five position to an S six, um, which is a, which is similar to other department head level positions. Um, so there is a financial impact in FY twenty-four budget of just under two thousand dollars, um, which in talking to Fred as our community development director, it could be absorbed, understanding that we have some part-time positions in that department currently where we could find, find the additional funding.
I would move to approve.
Oh, sorry, just one comment. Uh, Fred, thank you for putting this together. I think it, it accurately reflects, you know, what Zach has been doing and what the economic development committee has charged him with doing. So, um, and, uh, the, this is about the position, not the person, but the person is doing a terrific job.
But I do think, Sean, to your point, the, the position's really moving from a support role of the EDC to, um, a, a director role, to really sort of direct towards those goals and continue to support the economic development, uh, committee, but, but really taking more initiative, um, and moving towards, you know, sort of more developments. Yeah.
It really is a, it recognizes, I think, it's, it's really a professional level position. I think as you've all seen and heard, the grant opportunities and sort of the independence and the complexity of the work, I think warrants it being at that department head level.
Absolutely, and he's, he has been doing the job that we're making the description match with still other room for growth and evolution, which is important. He's, you know, very successful and, um, I don't, I don't get the impression that we don't think he's leading now because he's taken such a strong leadership role on so many initiatives. The number of initiatives, I've lost count. You know, um, so it's fabulous. Definitely supportive of this. So I would move to approve the economic development director job description as presented and further to amend the classification plan to reflect the position at the S six grade.
Second that.
All those in favor? Five to zero or five to present?
So it's actually effective July first.
Okay.
So that should be a part of your motion. Sorry.
Effective July first.
I resecond.
All in favor? Five to zero twice. Alright, next, we have the economic development committee terms and appointment process. We have a guest here. Todd, how you doing? Yeah, I want you, want you to come up and introduce yourself.
Todd Alexander, chairman of the, uh, economic development committee. Hopefully you all have the letter that we submitted. It's pretty straightforward. We're, we've had a lot of interest, uh, as you all know, in, um, people wanting to participate in the EDC when we've had openings, uh, recently. Hasn't historically been that way. And, uh, so we, as a committee, um, came up with some suggestions or, and/or requests, depending on how you want to look at it, um, for the select board to consider. Just summarizing it real quickly, you know, we, uh, we kindly request that you consider appointing the EDC as a nominating subcommittee, should the number of candidates ever exceed the number of vacancies. We request that the at-large committee members have staggered three-year terms rather than an annual appointments of all the at-large members. And then just, uh, lastly, we think that it's important for the, uh, select board to consider EDC ambassadors as strong candidates for the appointments when vacancies do exist. We've been trying to bring back that ambassador program. It was pretty successful in the past. I started off as an ambassador, I was an ambassador for probably, I think, six or seven years be, before I became a committee member. I only became a committee member because nobody else would step up to do it. And now, again, it's a lot different now. I think people are anxious to get involved, but we'd really like to see people start if we have the opportunity to get them in at the ambassador level. And, um, it helps to get them acclimated to some of the things that we do as a committee, but it also gets them out in front of some of the businesses in town as well and working with our economic development coordinator slash new director.
Excellent, any questions?
I, I think this is a great idea. Altering the structure of the terms and staggering it certainly align with the committee guidelines and handbook. And using the ambassador program as orientation, training, upspeeding, means that folks who agree and get appointed to the committee will hit the ground running. So I think it's a good strategy.
Any other questions or comments?
So just to be clear, the, the, in the memo that was presented, then the, the members that are listed here are currently members of the EDC?
Correct, yeah, and myself and Scott are the, uh, longest, uh, members on the board and that's why we suggested having us do the one year.
Yep. And then we have the other, um, members who are also currently members, but newer members, so hence the two and three year.
Correct, yeah, Sandy and David were appointed last year, so that'll give them more time on the board.
Great, thank you.
I would move to approve the term length of the seven at-large economic development committee seat to three years with staggered terms of one, two and three years to commence upon a newly appointed committee effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
Second it.
Do we, um, Todd had asked for a couple of other elements about preference. Do we need to acknowledge that in this motion? Preference for ambassadors and the nominating committee being, coming from the EDC?
I think that, um, the way that the committee handbook is written is that the board would consider, the, the committee handbook is written in a way that you're not, um, permanently setting up the structure where candidates go through the committees.
Right.
So you could, I, I don't think you need to take a vote. I think what I just made a note of is to put this in the file with the EDC so that we can sort of remind you of, of this request when the appointments come up.
Sounds good. Yeah, okay, thanks.
So we had a motion in a second. All those in favor? Five to zero?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the committee.
Remind everybody that we have our EDC year review event Friday morning. Hopefully you'll all be there. We'll just see you at the event.
Seven thirty AM, Gray Hall.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
The spirit. Yep, so the spirit committee has requested that we defer the approval of the fireworks contract to move it to the next meeting.
So next, we have town meeting follow-up discussion.
This is an opportunity that the board's taken in the past to have a conversation with the town moderator. Um, and, uh, I don't think we've done it in the last couple, so I think this is a good opportunity to review.
Now we're finally getting back to a little bit normal. So anyways, thanks for inviting me. As you've probably, if many of you probably remember, um, I try to meet with some boards.
Please introduce yourself.
John Arnold.
The most famous guy in town, come on!
So anyway, I started this tradition a number of years ago where I meet with a number of the boards and committees after the town meeting, just while it's fresh in mind. Hard to believe it was just exactly a month ago today, um, town meeting. It seems like forever ago, but it was like March twenty-fifth and, uh, seems like forever ago. So I met with the school committee, did a debrief with them. As I tend to do, I have one-on-one conversations with all of the finance committee people that I appoint just to get some feedback about how that committee is going and how town meeting goes. And then thanks to Christine and Kim for inviting me tonight. So I'm mostly here to listen. I got a few things that I can talk about, but, um, mostly just want to get feedback so we can all work together to get town meeting to keep running smoothly, make it better, things like that. So I don't know if you got any questions, comments, but, uh, let me know how you want to proceed and we can do that.
I would be interested to kind of toss that question back to you, John, to hear what other boards and committees, um, have said.
Okay, alright, so you want me to read that?
I mean, if, Sean, if that's okay with you.
I'll try, I mean, I didn't prepare lots of notes, but I'll, um, I think the response was overwhelmingly positive. Um, gotten a couple of personal notes from people, uh, thinking that it went very well. Um, one or two comments, there are things that can be improved. Always looking for that. So I'll, I'll touch on, on those because I'm not here to just bask in the glory of getting some rest. We all got some rest after all the meetings in the winter. So, so let's see, so, um, I think the, the positives were, um, the traffic light concept. Everyone felt, everyone, I, I think almost unanimously, everyone felt that that felt fair and everybody knew where they were. And the one point that I took from some questions that were asked is that because I didn't actually get that traffic light until the Friday afternoon before, um, I didn't have a chance to really write up how it was going to work and put it in the booklet. So I didn't want the red light to mean people had to stop in mid-sentence because most people are, A, not, aren't comfortable public speaking and, and B, as we know, people speaking at the podium couldn't see the light. So the, the red light was really to sort of give me a note to say thirty seconds, tell them to wrap up. Um, I'm going to try to get a little tabletop unit, um, to put on by Mark Stockman's desk so we can have people do both. So I think that went well. There was, uh, some notice, um, that I think it's two town meetings in a row now. Somebody's asked, uh, the finance committee for, uh, a. Somebody's asked the finance committee for, for why a handful of committee members voted one way rather than the other, and the finance committee couldn't really answer it on time. So I've, I'm going to bring that up to the finance committee next week, but I've already told many of them. The difficulty this time was the one person that they asked about wasn't at the meeting, and there weren't approved minutes that they could have been read yet, because the comments and the vote was done two days earlier at their Thursday night meeting. And there was a little bit of discomfort about summarizing the minutes that hadn't actually been approved, but we have some ideas for that as well. I think that although there was a little confusion about me not taking the order, people stood at the microphone in line. I have to make that clearer. My, my observation, and also a few comments made to me after the December special town meeting, were that the people who are like town meeting pros, you know, know, you know, they're comfortable speaking, they know what the process is, they go and get behind the microphone, and people who might be a little bit more reluctant to speak, maybe don't show up in time, and because, because there are times when not everybody gets spoken to, I noticed that there were a number of people who I don't think had ever spoken at a town meeting before, who were in line when we either took a vote or stopped debate. And also, I've never had success with using the standing microphones as being for or against, because nobody ever remembers, or they get in the wrong line. So the rationale for asking people to line up, I guess that's horizontally from my point of view, was not so I could handpick person, particular people, but I was trying to hear, hear voices that we hadn't heard at town meeting before. And I think that part went well. I think there was a little confusion about why people at the microphone didn't do that. So again, I think with a little explanation and with a little bit trying to be clearer about the process, we can work through that. But, but I was very pleased to see so many people who I don't think had ever spoken at town meeting before speak and bring their points home, so it wasn't just all people hearing that. The, the one thing that I would like us to, we don't have to discuss it or answer the question now, but an observation that I've had and an observation that's been brought to me, is that we're now two or three years into the nine o'clock Saturday starts. When we first did it in COVID, it went very easily, because it was a shortened warrant, because we knew we didn't want to sit in the gym in ninety degrees, wearing masks for, for all day. But then in 2022, we had a fourteen and a half hour meeting spread over sixteen hours, because we had a whopping hour and a half break. And this year, I was somewhat surprised that we got done at eight-thirty. I really thought it was going to go to at least nine or ten. But the, the observations that have been brought to me is that if, starting at nine o'clock, do we really think that people at their, are at their optimum best trying to grind through essentially what turns into three sessions if people take their own lunch break? So we're essentially asking people who are, you know, sort of volunteer amateur legislators to come in at nine o'clock and then sit and maybe go out for lunch and come back until five, and then come back at six and wrap it up. So even this year, where we were done at eight-thirty, it still turned out that it was like a nine-hour day. So, so there's, there are a lot of ways to solve that problem, but the, the things that I've thought that, that you and I, and maybe through some mechanism, we could just ask the general public at large, is are people okay with that? I mean, I'm there, I'll do it. I'm, I'm running on adrenaline, so I'll, I'll do whatever it takes. Or would people prefer to go in the morning, maybe go a little late, go till like one or two, then take an afternoon break and come back at seven? Or would they rather go in the morning, come back in the afternoon, have the evening off? And I think this goes hand in hand. I think part of the reason why we have the, the desire to just power through it is because we all know that the current electronic voting system that we use is quite expensive, and we all want to get our maximum dollars' worth out of, out of that one day that we have. I will say that something that Wendy Mickle and I started talking about, but because of our, the, our own time constraints, plus COVID, never got around to it, was looking at alternative technologies that might be cheaper, in which case, the economic need to say, oh, we've got to get it all done in a day. And Deb Ledoux and I are going to continue that this spring and summer to sort of look into that. There are a couple of options that other towns in Massachusetts use that I'm hoping to go see in, in practice, or to watch some meetings, and then talk to moderators and town clerks. So that might take some of the, sort of the economic oomph out of feeling that we just have to do, you know, like ten, twelve-hour days. But I'm curious, A, in your thoughts on that, and curious, curious to know if it's something that we should try to get answers to, you know, what the, what the voters really think is best for them by the time we do it next March, you know, since we didn't change the rule for, for this, for this October, we have time. And I've probably already talked too much, so that's, that's, that's pretty much the summary of, of what I heard.
Thank you, John. Any comments?
I just had a comment, and I'm biased on this one, because that's how I started going to town meeting, is a scout running microphones. I just have felt in the last few meetings that, they haven't been there, the ones that have been there, just that it really hasn't worked the way it did in the past. And I think as we get a lot of people in and, and trying to get people to move out of rows, I think trying to figure out, because I think those work, bringing those microphones down at people in their seats, and I think it speeds the meeting up. But we just, I mean, we just haven't gotten the volunteers to show up, but.
I also, that was one of my items. I also had, I think it allows for that variety of speakers. So there might be people that just physically have difficulty to like, oh, I'm not going to climb over someone to go get there, to only maybe not be, you know, get my chance. So I absolutely think the voting microphones are.
And also going back to where I tell people, put a microphone here, we'll hear this person, and then the microphone stays there. So there isn't, because I know, a number of years ago, there was always the wait, and I've tried to get rid of the wait. But yeah, this year, maybe I've, I've overdone it and not asked for hands as much and had scouts there, so I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
I think in past years, there were sometimes three or four.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the last couple, it's been one or two.
It's been harder to get volunteers and harder to know when they're there, and sometimes they're there and I don't know they're there, and sometimes they're gone and I think they're there, and so.
Yep. No, I think it's a whole, it doesn't, you coordinate it, but, you know, maybe it's even working with the scout leaders and, I mean, I remember, I think it used to be Charlotte family used to run it for everybody.
Volunteers carry the microphones.
Exactly. Yeah, it could be not scouts, it could be anybody. So, but I think it's an important piece to add.
Yeah, it's another way to get more voices and also people who aren't comfortable standing up or whatever. So, thank you.
Besides that, you hit on the other one that I heard, which was a lot of speakers wanted to see something in front of them, because it was at their back. So I think you've already addressed it, so that's, that's all I had.
So the, the feedback I've heard were, again, I referred them and suggested they email you, as the appointing authority with Advisory Finance Committee, having some mechanism where they record a statement of dissent or support, something along those lines. You know, even if minutes aren't approved, they're still part of the public record. But some way, a lot of people, not a lot, several, probably half a dozen probably say it seems disingenuous if their charge is to advise, to then decline to offer the advice or the explanation.
One of the, one of the things that discussed when I talked with the individual finance committee members, again, I'll summarize this at their meeting next Thursday, would be to feel more comfortable about if there's votes that, you know, that, that do have, you know, like eight to one, seven to two, or whatever, to, to try to get the book done early enough that the majority can write three or four sentences summarizing the key points of why they're in favor, the minority can write a, you know, handful of sentences saying what the points were. So it's already in the booklet, and that would save time, because you wouldn't have to ask the question, it would already be there. And so that's just a matter of just thinking about that and realizing it's an option, so, yeah.
And then the other suggestion that came from a couple of different people are to think about, as far as session length and managing the day.
Yeah.
Someone referred to it to me as the Little League Rule, where Little League games are a certain number of innings, but you never start an inning after a certain time period. So if the goal is a, you know, a two-hour limit, it'll be five innings, or you don't start an inning after an hour and forty-five minutes. And so the thought was, could it be where, whatever time a session starts, in the, in the hours that were suggested to me were anywhere from three to five, but say, absent a vote to the contrary, we would not start a warrant article after so much time, there would be a planned recess. I do think that suggestion came in a few before town meeting. I think the school and the food service team did a phenomenal job with the sandwiches and the salads and made-to-order and getting people through quickly, and even having some places to sit for a few minutes was great. So I'm not sure if that's necessary around lunch, but even around the dinner, it was even suggested that in the evening meetings, that if we do continue into the week, starting at six instead of six-thirty or seven, and saying, you know, absent a vote of town meeting to the contrary, we won't start a new warrant article after three and a half hours, or after four hours, whatever, some guidance being.
Yeah, I'll certainly ask around to see, I mean, given that the, the stopping and starting of the meeting and, and the either adjourning or recessing is a vote of the meeting, I can find out if there's a way that, at the front of the meeting, we can have everybody vote on a rule of the meeting to do something like that, and I can ask if that's an acceptable thing.
And as you're out and about, more feedback is to whether or not that's a desirable idea, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. Because as we know, you know, in 2022, when we stayed till eleven, till we stayed till like twelve-thirty in the morning, there was a motion, a vote to adjourn at eleven, and it lost. Yes. You know, and I think everybody thought that those citizens petitions, oh, this is going to go quickly, and then we were there for like two more hours.
Okay, that, that's it. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I only, I, all the observations, I think, were ones I made and heard as well, so I'll just say, John, great job again this year. The one thing, question I have is, on the cost side of it, I think last year we talked about, and maybe, maybe you said this, but are you also looking at the opportunities with those other communities and, around cost sharing, that electronic session?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think we, I think we almost certainly have to go out to bid or whatever, but one of, one of the other vendors does not have, I mean, part of the, maybe this is sort of inside baseball, one of the big costs of the, of the option that we use is that they set up a private network, and they send people, and they send the hardware, and they send the voting devices themselves. And so you're essentially buying time, you're buying people and whatever. One of the other options that, that I think we're going to investigate is that towns can essentially buy the devices, and they license the software, and it would run off the school's Wi-Fi. So we have to make sure it's secure enough and all those things. But one of the advantages that I've heard in speaking with, with other people that have that, is that as long as towns coordinate, so the serial numbers of the voting devices are okay, like Westboro could buy like five hundred or so, and if we were going to have a meeting like last December, where we thought they're going to be fifteen hundred, if other towns use the same system and they have voting devices that have serial numbers that don't overlap, you can actually share them and borrow them and do that. So I don't think we could necessarily share the cost of the software license, but it would allow us to have a core set of voting devices, and if we thought there was going to be more turnout, we could coordinate with other towns that didn't have town meeting the same day to say, can we borrow yours? And they'd say yes, and then likewise, if they needed ours, we could lend them, and that's another way to sort of share the cost.
Have you heard any interest from any other communities on that concept?
There's definitely interest in doing that. So I just got to, just have to dig into the details of the cost and security and all that, so.
There's, as part of the discussion, I'm sure you'll hear this, but there are communities who own them who wish they didn't, because the, the technology becomes outdated quickly. You need staff to support them. I've heard stories about managers spending the night before town meeting, changing batteries and voting devices. Not that I'm not willing to do that, but it's just, it's a lot more, it's a lot more work than I think it might first appear, which I'm sure John will, will learn about.
Yeah, yeah, when Deb and I look into it, I'm sure there's pros and cons.
We can multitask here at the board while we're voting and saying, it's changing batteries.
I'll go out and change the batteries while I have to. So, yes, I've got, yeah, so I'm hoping we can come, that Deb and I can, can either form a little task force or come, you know, we'll talk to Kristi as well, but just come back with sort of the pros and cons and see what the choices are.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
I just have one thing, and I'm not even sure it's actually for you, John, it might be more for us. So the last couple of years, some of the most topical warrant articles have been the citizens petitions. And I think there's folks who have been driven to the meeting for the first time because of those citizens petitions, and have looked to get involved in town meeting. And then what happens is, we always have them at the end, you know, 2022, they were at eleven PM, pushing on midnight. You know, the meeting finished earlier this year, so fortunately, they were at like eight, you know, which was very beneficial. But I think, and it's nearly impossible to move an article at town meeting. I know there's a mechanism for it, but it is.
Yeah, the mechanism is actively discouraging it, and I think, going back to the olden days, when people would say, this is coming up then, so I'll plan to be there then, you know?
Right, right.
But as you know, where, where it's placed is, is up to you. You know, and/or we could have a bylaw that lets us do a random draw or something like that, you know, so.
So I, yeah, I'm just sort of throwing something out there, and given that there have been, you know, citizens petition these past couple of years, and it may be something that we sort of begin to see more of, yeah, I think it is something that's a board that, I mean, it's probably worth a discussion point.
Yep.
So I just put that out there, since we are discussing town meeting follow-up.
Yes, well. Just, just, you made me think of something here, Sean. I'm just curious, on the citizens petition piece of it, is there any opportunity for us to better educate the community? Because as you mentioned, there's a lot of new people, which is terrific having them come, but is, you know, I don't know, I'm brainstorming it out here in my head, you know, is there a communication that could happen? I know that there's videos on town meeting and all of that, but when, for example, the town clerk's office hands the paperwork over for a citizens petition, do they give another piece of paper that says, here's, here's the links to, you know, the presentations on town meeting and, and the education that you provide? I'm just trying to figure out a way.
Well, I mean, I agree, we can, we can do, I'm willing to do whatever outreach we think we can do. I mean, and if the, I don't know if people, I literally don't know if people go to the town clerk, or if they go to the town manager's office, but certainly there could be stuff to say, before you get too far with this, you know, talk to me, talk to the town clerk, or get, or have the town managers hear the gist of it and say who to talk to.
Yes.
Because, because, yeah, I mean, the, the most confusing thing that can happen is a poorly crafted petition comes up with the signatures, and you can't change it, I can't change it, and we got to try to figure out in the couple of weeks before the meeting, is there a motion that we can craft here? So, so doing, doing outreach before people even get the idea is good. And then, and then if somebody goes and picks up paper, you know, certainly, I'm willing to, to work with you and Kristi's office to say, here's like a handout that says, here's how it works, and before you go too far, talk to me, or talk to, talk to the town clerk, or talk to somebody, just to understand exactly what's going on. Because you're right. People write down what they want to achieve, not realizing it has to be crafted in a form that you have to be able to make a motion, and there's a difference between an article and a motion, and then people's eyes just glaze over, because it's such, it's such minutia and such detail that they don't think about it. They just want to get some problems solved, you know?
The town clerk does generally send them up, or recommend that they come and meet with me, which many do, but it's certainly their choice, so not always.
Feel free to refer them to me, too, because I know sometimes people say like, oh, you've already got your mind made up, and some people think like, oh, you're going to try to discourage me from this to that, I mean.
Well, and I would say that John works really closely with petitioners, especially after it's submitted, because you help them craft.
Yeah, once I know they're in play, then I try to help as much as I can. I mean, and I'll, and I'll give you credit, as, as well as the woman who did it, for what turned into a naughty citizens petition, was a very prime example of the learning process, when the woman talked about wanting the sidewalk moved. I know Kristi talked to her, I talked to her, and I said, well, like, you know, rather than just saying, do this, you know, it could be that putting lights right there isn't the best solution. It could, I said, I've driven through, since I was sixteen years old, I've driven through there, and there's a lot of visual distraction, and all the lights in the world are not necessarily going to keep everybody from hitting somebody. So, so we had a nice conversation, said, how about we say that it's a problem with crossing West Main Street, but we give some latitude about where it is? And then, let's give some latitude to solve the problem the right way, not the immediate, this exact way. Because I didn't want to see the thing be turned down because we don't want it here, we want it here, and, you know, and then I'll thank you folks for following up and actually taking it on, so it wasn't this is petition and just something that the, the concerned citizen could talk about as helping solve their problem. So I think that was a real win-win-win, that it worked very well in that regard.
So, any other?
Yep. Thank you. So I do think, I want to thank you, John, for continuing to find the balance between the infamous, I want to move the question, and termination of debate, and kind of a show of hands, who else would like to speak? I know that once there's a motion, you go right to that, I understand that, but I think that with what seems to be a growing interest in attending town meeting, your very intentional, like, ask of like, how many people kind of want to speak early in that debate, I think is helpful for the audience to hear. I guess it could work the other way. People say, oh, God, all these people, and I'm going to move that question faster. So maybe just don't call in certain people, I'm kidding.
No, no, no. Believe me, for all, for everyone who thinks that that's how it works, there have been many times where I've called on someone, thinking for sure that's what they're going to do, and they actually asked a question. I honestly have no longer have any idea who's going to do that.
No, I know. No, the best line was the woman who said, and believe it or not, I really want to speak, or the woman in the blue shirt. That was really funny. So, but I, I think continuing that practice, I think is important.
I'll try to remember.
Particularly as we have new people that haven't participated. I just want to acknowledge, Alan sort of touched on it, the food service I thought was an excellent addition. I thought it really helped. I mean, they were great, the staff was great, so kudos to them. But appreciate the arrangement that went in.
Thank you to the schools for organizing all that.
Yep. Also, I think there sounded like there was pretty significant utilization of the child sitting services. And kudos to not just the kids, but there were parents involved. I think kind of helping those students kind of make sure everyone's.
We're still shaking that out. I mean, I was trying to get the, get the details.
But they stayed longer. I mean, so, but I think, I think that between the microphones and that volunteer service is really, really important, particularly as the meetings go on. So I think we just need to pay close attention to the importance of that service because that is one thing that I hear from residents, like, I've got kids and, you know, I'm responsible for them that day and, you know, or I'm a single parent, whatever the situation is. But it's, it's critical that we provide it.
Yeah. And I was going to add on, I mean, I think it was really good. We had a little bit of confusion there where Amber had sent Christie a note saying, we don't have any childcare. So we announced it, people freaked out, and then.
And then they managed to scramble and get some.
Yeah, they managed to get national high school kids back and national honor side or whatever back. But I think, again, similar to the scouts of asking those folks to organize it and make sure it's there. So when we tell other people, they can do it. Because that's, it's, it's important. And I think we saw a lot of people come and utilize it, which again, has more people attend the meeting, which is what we want. So, thank you for that, Shelby.
And on the childcare thing too, I'll just add to your Shelby, that one of the things, I was being asked if there was childcare. I went out to the, to look for the information and it was very sparse information. So I would just also, if there's an opportunity, you know, between the town and the schools, to post some information earlier on as far as the times and where drop-off is and all of that type of information, I think it'd be helpful. Because it was, I think it just said there was going to be.
Right. And at the time, that's all I knew. So yes, I've made a note to try to get more details. So it can be announced.
So the other, I thought, Patrick, you were going to touch base on this, but you went down a different direction with the citizens petition. So I, I believe that there's some conversation going on, and I would certainly, you know, think we should maybe explore it. But is there a way to do sort of a, working with Westboro TV, of course, like an article preview where departments, whomever, could do a very brief, like, layperson, non-motion preview of what this article is? And in a way, and maybe, maybe, yeah, I mean, I think that, I'd rather the towns sort of orchestrate that than having maybe residents do that because there could be information loss in translation and, but.
Well, I could certainly run it. It would be an informal town meeting. But I mean, I could cer, I mean, if we wanted to do, you know, like, if people, again, it all comes down to time and resources and all that.
Of course.
But if somebody wanted to, to do, you know, like the, the Saturday even before or sometime after to just sort of go through it and, and let people make their persuasive case and let them practice, sort of like they do to the finance committee. So people don't have to go hop, skip and jump through 20 finance committee meetings to get all that information.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, we'd love to believe that everyone watches it and we're nearing the, you know, finalization of the warrant. But people just don't. And so Christie, you look like you were going to comment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we actually talked about doing something like this during COVID when we were trying to figure out how we're going to move forward with town meetings, have each department head present the article. So I don't know if that's what you're saying, if you're talking about citizens.
Well, no, I'm talking about anything on the warrant. No, not so much for against, but just really kind of, you know, so Chris Pan coming before, he doesn't have to do his whole, like, I mean, I think having the presentations there, but this is what it is, this is what I'm asking for. I mean, some of them would be like this, but some of them are not, like the PFAS one, that's more complicated. But, you know, having a, like, couple minutes would be great.
Yeah, we've talked about that. So I think that that's something that we should definitely explore.
Okay.
Put it in our goals. Put it in our goals. I like it.
Yeah, yeah. So I think something along those lines.
And again, next year's wouldn't be for necessary deliberation, but just the way to get people to get the information out, right?
You haven't started yet.
Well, I mean, and one of the other concepts to this too, is, and Shelby just reminded me of it, was that, you know, when you look at this, what the state does every year during the election is they provide that booklet we all have, right? And in that booklet, you have, you know, the, the, the pro and the con.
If you can understand that.
Well, true. And, and the reason why I kind of didn't bring it up was I was like, how would that logistically work? Even if you split up the articles by saying whoever the sponsor is, well, the sponsor, of course, is going to write the pro. The hard part is finding who's going to, who's going to write the con to it. And, you know, taking that another step further about kind of pre-positioning the presentations, right? To me, that's a huge time savings if we could, if there was a way to do that, to have people present it. Here's my five-minute pitch, and it gets captured, it goes to town meeting, maybe that pitch happens again. And there's, you know, or maybe it's just a discussion or something. I don't know. How do you, how do you speed it up? Is there a way through technology that we could speed up the thing?
Are you talking about, sorry, are you talking about, were you talking about present, having the clips to show at town meeting? Or just ahead of time?
No, ahead of time.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Right. I, I have heard residents say, why couldn't some of these presentations be available in advance? I'd watch them and then I would just come and vote. I still think that you can't, we don't want to disadvantage folks.
You can't assume that everybody who shows it's watching.
I think if, if.
And part of the debate.
Right, the debate, exactly. So if, if there were, there's information that in that synopsis effort that we're talking about, they want to show, that's great. But I think just a, like, here's what it is, you're not in an audience, you can watch it, you know, would be, I think would be interesting to see if that folks.
I'll certainly help with that with ideas. I think, I think part of the, again, time and resources.
Yeah, I understand.
The war, I mean, unlike the state booklet that takes thousands of signatures, lots of time, the warrant doesn't close till like two weeks before. And then there's the mad rush.
Right.
You know, so we just got to try.
You might change that, though.
Well, I mean, we did. I mean, this year, we closed it a month before town meeting. It's, it's, in terms of the pro and con, I mean, you can't, John and I actually have had this exact discussion multiple times and recently about the persuasiveness of your information. So department heads and proponents are supposed to, you're supposed to provide information. You're not supposed to be persuading one way or the, the other. So, so with the town, the article information statements, it's very, it's supposed to be very factual.
Yeah. The presentation can be persuasive.
Yeah.
But essentially, anything accompanying the warrant should be as neutral as possible just to do that. But so.
Right. And so my, my thought on that then, because the warrant is a warrant and you can read it, but the purpose of doing kind of a preview would be to maybe not give the whole presentation, but here's the why and, you know.
And here's how to get more information. I mean, what I always, I mean, any way we can do it, what I always try to get, say like, if you, you know, right away, right now, if you read it and have a question, contact me, contact the town manager's office. If at all possible, go ask your question beforehand.
Right.
And even if, even if you feel like you want to ask it again at town meeting, it's giving people a chance to say, okay, this is, this is what people want to know about.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I'll certainly help with that, you know.
Yep. Okay. Well, I, I think, you know, let's explore that if we can. The other question or that was brought to my attention was just around translation services. We, you know, we're in a community where there are many, 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 Alan, I think you know that number offhand from the schools, how many languages are spoken. I'm not suggesting that we have all of them available. What one question would be to start, could we make the warrant in a translation? I know Google does it. Is there a translation service of the warrant that we could start with as a way to at least allow people to read that? Again, I'm not sure how we, you know, provide 70 different languages of translation at town meeting. But at least the warrant, I think, speaks to the diversity in our community.
I know when I spoke with the diversity inclusion committee, they were also interested in how, not just town meeting, but things leading up to town meeting also, how to, how to improve outreach, not on, you know, across, you know, beyond, you know, English speaking.
Sure.
It's tricky, but it's certainly, just because it's tricky, doesn't mean you shouldn't think about it and try to solve it.
Right, right, right. So, I mean, I think that, I mean, again, I think that there, there are pretty easy ways to translate documents. If we could start there and make that, you know, available, even just as a link, like if you, if you need this document translated or translate, you know, click here. And then, you know, just that it's housed together. And to that point, though, I'm wondering if there's a, a way in which we can, you can, John, to do a little bit of a roadshow to some, to get out the word in the community about, you know, what is town meeting? How does it work? Who can vote? All of that.
Yeah. If people have groups where I can talk to, let me know. I'll do, I'll do it with whatever time I have. I mean, I volunteered, I volunteered to go to schools. It's always, it's always hard fitting in because by the time anybody's time to do it, it's like MCAS time. But if there's groups, I know you've got your show. I mean, if you want to go on your show sometime, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Welcome.
Yeah, so.
All right.
I'll gladly talk to any groups about it, one of, in order to, one of the things I've been trying to figure out how to do is, you know, to increase the representational diversity of the finance committee, which, as you can imagine, is probably one of the hardest volunteer positions to fill because they meet a lot. And unlike when I had small kids and hung out at soccer games or the league games, I, I, I work during the day and at night I come talk to people like you in the finance committee who I already know. And so I, I personally don't have that much time to meet new people. But I was thinking, even just going to the parents groups and asking for 15 minutes to just explain what town meeting is, not in, not in a whole, you know, telling everything we know or whatever, but just to get people to come up to me afterward and say, hey, I'm one of the people who wants to know more and then figure that out. So if, if you know groups that, that would be willing to hear me talk, I'll try to come up with a little 15-minute, like primer of town meetings.
Well, we can certainly sit, you know, I'd love to have you on as a guest and we can do that. And then we can push that out to, as content. So that would be great. Let's do that.
Yeah. Because outreach, I think, is an important part of my job.
And then people can self-service. Thank you for coming.
I just wanted to add my comments. I, I really liked the, the traffic light, except when it applied to me.
Yeah, sorry about that. I realized when I got there that morning that I had not prepped anyone to say that I was going to do that. And I realized you and Mike went first. And I said, oh, no.
That's okay.
My apologies for not telling you what was going to happen.
Lesson learned. I'll just have two separate presentations.
I just remember 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And now?
And then I just wanted to do your question about the length of the meeting and starting at nine. I know obviously you want to hear from lots of folks. And just, I guess I would just speak on behalf of the department heads that people, we, we have actually really positive feedback from the 9:00 AM start, as well as sort of going as long as our stamina can take it. Just because you, you block out that Saturday.
Yeah, they've already blocked out that day.
Right. So, so to have sort of a longer break in the middle of the day or starting late.
Isn't helpful, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Again, there, there's no perfect solution.
No.
Now, you want me to terminate the debate? I've been here way more than that 15 minutes.
Yes. I won't vote for it, though. I never vote to terminate a debate.
Going once, going twice.
All right.
Thank you very much.
If you want to follow up with any conversations, let me know.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
You are always available. We know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the select board and town manager goals update.
Thank you. So this is a quarter three goals update. These all go on the website with the list of goals for both the select board and the town managers. This will be added. To just go through it quickly, these are FY '23 goals, so fiscal year '23, so sort of due to be finished at the end of June of this year. The sale of the Regal Cinema was, was a goal of the select board, and that bid was, was voted to be awarded on November 2nd. And that's still working through that. The leases with the, with the Fay Mountain Tower, that actually also expires in 2025. So we'll start to talk about that, but we can do that actually in the subsequent, in the next fiscal year. And then also we have the country club lease, which of course led us, when we got the assessment, it led, led you to the creation of the golf club reuse, building, building use committee. I keep tripping over that. But they had their first meeting, we had our first meeting last night, and it was, it was excellent. I think it's a great committee. The American Rescue Plan fund allocation, that's something that we've been working through since this time last year. And so that money needs to be obligated by the end of calendar year '24. And so now that we've sort of made our changeover of the finance team with the new chairs of the school committee and the select board, and then also the new chair of the finance committee, we're going to start to talk about that again. So that'll be coming before you in the next couple of months. And then really trying to make sure that we've obligated all of the money and time for that end of fiscal '24. And so just as a, or sorry, calendar year '24, just as a reminder, obligating it isn't, isn't within the town process. It means that you're under contract. So it has to, you have to be under contract by the end of calendar '24 and then spent by calendar year '26. So. Evaluation of the waste programs, the board had created the Waste Management Exploratory Committee. And then, and just to evaluate waste programs and then subsequently finding out that we would no longer have access to the transfer station at July 1st of 2024, that committee became even more important. And I think has sort of escalated their timeline in order to meet that, that date. And I know that they'll be coming before the board in the next couple of months to propose a recommendation. And then following on that, there would be an RFP process to start to prepare for that July 1st, '24 date. Communication and education related to taxation was really a discussion about the tax classification hearing. That was a goal of both the select board and myself. And we've marked that as complete. I think we had really successful discussions throughout last summer, leading up to the tax classification hearing in November, putting out a lot of material, a lot more public education than we've had in the past.
Can I ask just a quick question on the evaluation of the waste program? Sorry to go back. But I'm just curious, with the timeline being so quick, you know, 14 months or so now, there's going to be, I imagine, a significant amount of education that's going to have to happen across the community. And I'm just concerned, will the recommendation not only be for whatever the process, the vendors, whatever that piece of it is, but will it also, will that timeline also show what the expectation is as far as training and educating the community on, on it? And I realize you may not have the answer to this, but I would ask that, that be part of, of that plan.
So Shelby can speak to this because she's on the committee. I just attend all the meetings. But the, the initial recommendation will not be that comprehensive. It's, it's the initial recommendation is going to be sort of more generally what we would move to next. And we're doing this in consultation with the technical assistants from the Department of Environmental Protection. So we do have our liaison who's guiding us through this. So this is really a process that she's used in other communities. And so I think the idea of the, the very first time they come before you is really to get a sense of whether or not the board and the committee are on the same page, so that they're not moving forward without that support from the board. But understanding that we definitely need public education at the point at which we're ready.
Yeah.
No, no question. That's been discussed. And, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
The Economic Development Forum, we, on November 2nd, we had the Economic Development Coordinator, formerly known as the Economic Development Coordinator. He came and presented to the board, talked a lot about the Economic Development Self-Assessment Report that, that was done in 2013 and kind of where we've been. And the whole point of that report was to really understand how businesses viewed our departments and our permitting processes, and to really get some good understanding of how we can improve. So he was able to sort of take the board through that conversation and then also talk about some new initiatives that really came out of the local rapid recovery plan. All in all, we felt like, or the discussion was that the EDSAT report, because that process had included lots of business feedback, he talked about ways that we currently are receiving business feedback. And so that's really through work with Economic Development Committee, the local rapid recovery plan included businesses' feedback, and then also the master plan, where we got feedback from people in the community. The senior needs assessment, as I mentioned, is wrapping up. Really excited to share that with the community in the next month. These are my goals. So the Citizen Leadership Academy, I've mentioned to you before that we are putting together a schedule or syllabus for the fall. So that'll be presented for the board's information in, on June 13th at your first meeting in June. Develop strategic plan update process. So that was, we talked about an internal process to update the strategic plan and sort of looking at what other communities do and what our next steps might be. The process that I'll propose to you in June is going to have a lot of relationship to the master plan. So being on the master plan implementation committee, I think we've noted that a lot of the goals are very broad, whereas the strategic plan is sort of is more kind of actionable items. So looking at those broad goals and making sure that the strategic plan action items are within those goals. So recommend schedule for long-term capital needs. We have a meeting as a finance, an internal finance team, so the finance director, assistant town manager, myself, on the approach to sort of scheduling out these projects that are now appearing in our capital plan. And so we want to present to the finance team in June, and then we'll present to the board at the June 27th meeting. BWALT project implementation progress. We've made some great. BWALT Project Implementation Progress, we've made some great progress. So, the first section of that, of the BWALTs is part of the Otto Street Corridor project, which we received two-thirds of the funding for that project. And then, as a, as a group, we've looked at the opportunity to move on to the second phase, which we took to the Capital Planning Committee. And then we took to Town Meeting Request for Matching Funds for a Grant that we've applied for. So, still waiting on that outcome from that grant. In the meantime, we need to, we're, we've started to work with CMRPC. We need to pick that back up in terms of synthesizing the feasibility study for the public, making it a little bit easier to, to review. Tax Classification Education, we talked about. And then, the last one is the Land Prioritization Committee. I can say that I completed that, but really, it's just because we have a fantastic new Conservation Director in Jennifer Miller. I talked to her about her experience with, you know, this type of project. And so, she's had, has some really good ideas about ways that the town can approach land prioritization, not, not just for open space, but other needs that we might have. And that committee will be meeting on May 1st, where we'll, we'll start to talk about that. And Ian's your representative on that committee. That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Those were as we all remembered?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so, next, we request to approve the meeting minutes of March 25th, 31st, 6th, and 11th. I do have an amendment to the March 31st minutes when we get to them.
I move the approval of the March 25th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? For the March 31 minutes, the amendment I request is that I was present at the meeting.
Really?
It's totally personal. No, I, I, the topic we have to sign tonight and in your package.
It's updated.
It's changed.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
I was looking, I said, no, he was present. It says it on mine, but you updated it. That's why.
Okay. All right, we're up to April 6th.
I move we accept the minute, minutes of the meeting of April 6th, 2023 is presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Five to zero.
And I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of April 11th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Seela.
Yes. So, issues and correspondence of the Select Board.
Sure. I will be real quick, just one thing. Christie mentioned, so we had our initial meeting of the golf course building use committee last night. Echo what Christie said, I think it went very well. We've set our, we elected Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary. We did a tour of the building and we kind of talked about planning it out going forward. Our next, we set our next couple of meetings, we're going to be meeting on Wednesday, May 10th, we believe in here, we just booked it, make sure it's okay, but at 6:30. And then following that Wednesday, May 24th at 6:30. Our next meeting on May 10th, we've asked the Recreation Director, as well as the, the Golf Pro, to present to us on their thoughts of uses, et cetera. That'll be for that meeting. And then, we're working on for the meeting of the 24th of trying to get a, someone who understands restaurants and whatever can talk about that, as well as other ideas. The other thing we have, we talked about and, and kind of agreed to is we want to get a survey out to the community. So, we're working on collecting questions for that and we'll, during those two meetings, kind of start working on facilitating and combining those questions to make an effective survey. So, encourage anybody that has questions, whether it's from the Board here, to include myself or Christie on those, but also for the broader community, if anybody has them, to send them along to us so we can include them. We'll say it's, they are public meetings. We did have the public attended, which was great, last night. So, it is, they're all open meetings. That, one we had last night, because we're doing the tour, we held in the meeting room at the, at the Pro Shop. But our next meetings will be, as I said, here, because we have had a request from folks that wanted it to be televised. So, we will be televising those meetings as well.
Excellent.
And lucky for me, I got elected Chair.
I was just, no, I was going to say, could you just share who, who the position, who accepted what for positions? Chair or Vice Chair?
I got elected Chair. Morris Shuney is the Vice Chair and Jen Kirkland is Secretary.
Thank you.
And I did not petition for it. I said I didn't want it and everyone stepped backwards. So, yes. But it is a really good committee. It's, they, everyone, I thought, worked well together, but, but everyone participated and is really good.
I mean, I think it's tough, just make it coming. I think it's tough when you're the Select Board Representative there, people want to defer to you, especially when there's a lot of folks who have not been on a committee for. So, it's almost difficult to say no, you know?
Yeah.
Maybe you can re-vote halfway through or something.
I hope so.
That's all I had, thanks.
Sure. I'll go next. Yeah, so, just to remind the community that on May 13th, actually, it's a very busy day, the fishing challenge for the Civic Club. It's free registration. It's at Miniman Park, starting at 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And there's going to be great prizes and food and drinks. So, I look forward to seeing everybody out there. As an avid fisherman, I really enjoy this event. Then I'll also remind the community that soon as you leave there, you should head over to the, the Westboro Environmental Action Fair at the high school, being hosted by the Sustainable Westboro and the Rotary Club. The Environmental Action Fair will provide participants information about how our daily lives are impacting the environment, including climate change. The goal is to offer the community useful information and resources that could be used to make timely changes at the individual or local level to protect the environment. We're expecting 40 exhibitors. And I should also mention, actually, there's going to be, the first speakers are actually going to be at noon time. So, there's going to be three speakers, or three speaking sessions, I should say, starting at noon. So, we hope to see everybody there at the high school. It's going to be a great time and we're really looking forward to all of the, the environment, excuse me, the, the event. Thank you. Oh, actually, one other quick thing. We did, Christie kind of touched on this, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been meeting regularly every two weeks and we are continuing to make progress through the discussions. The committee's learning a lot, right? So, this is a committee that's not necessarily fully informed on all the different departments at once and whatnot. So, they're really getting some really good information from the various different departments about what they're doing and, and what some of their, I'll say, boundaries are with what they can do. So, it's been some really good, positive conversation. I've really enjoyed it.
Sure, I'll jump in. So, I want to just provide an update on a couple of community events that are happening. Westboro Unplugs 2023 is taking place starting Sunday, April 30th, and will run all week through May 6. And that is a, this is the community's fourth celebration of National Screen Free Week. It's sort of coordinated and led by Westboro Connects, but it's very much a collaborative effort with lots of different clubs, volunteers, et cetera. You can go to westbrowconnects.org to learn more information on how to participate. All events are free. They're multi-generational, so something for everyone. Encourage folks to check that out. Put your device down and get out and smell the pollen and the grass and pick up a book or do something. But the highlight, kind of the signature event there will be booking a To Bay State event where folks are encouraged to bring a book down and go and kind of just enjoy that common space. The, at the end of that week, on Sunday, May 7th, there is an event called Spring Into Wellness. That's from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. That is taking place at Mill Pond and it's a, again, a collaborative effort with Westboro Connects, the Rotary Club of Westboro, Westboro Public Schools, Youth and Family Services. And I hope I'm not missing anyone in that recognition. But this collaborative effort brings a free community program for all ages, childrens through senior adults, through a wellness expo, hands-on activities and opportunities to learn about health benefiting tools, connecting people to much-needed resources related to supporting mental and behavioral health. So, encourage folks to check this out. This is a new event to the community. So, again, that's Sunday, May 7th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And on perhaps a less exciting and note, the Haka Maka Pond Reuse Committee continues its work. We'll be meeting this week. We'll be hearing from the University of Connecticut Technical Assistance Program. We have submitted for that grant and, and so they'll be presenting to the committee and so that work continues. And we've already talked about waste management, so we won't go there right now. Thank you.
See, I knew a lot of mine were duplicates.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I didn't want to steal, no, I didn't want to steal anyone's thunder. I had the fishing challenge and saw it on Patrick's screens. Let him do it. He's, he's definitely more of a fisherman than me. I fished, I've never caught, ever.
Oh, we got to go out.
Anyway.
I'm taking you out.
You're supposed to catch?
The key is if you catch something, you got to take it off the hook.
True, true. A couple of very quick things. Kudos, go to the Westboro High School Marching Band who performed the National Anthem.
Oh, that's right, I saw that.
At Fenway Park last week. That video, video is available online and on social media. It's, it's pretty cool. For them to carry the instruments all the way there, it was just amazing. And they did a great job and represented us very well. I also want to recognize Pete Dunbeck. He was selected to participate on a panel happening next month for elected officials on best practices in planning, creating, and implementing climate action plans. And so, his excellent work for us is being recognized on a much broader level as well, which is good to see. And one, with the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, to date, at least 12 organizations have taken copies of the RFP for the reconstruction of an affordable home at 3 Baylor Avenue. The next step in the process is next week, May 3rd. We're at 10:00 AM here, there's a bidder conference for Q and A, immediately after which we'll be moving to 3 Baylor Avenue for a site walkthrough. Someone joked that it's probably the first time that home's had guests in about eight years. But it'll give bidders a chance to, you know, take pictures, survey the property, do whatever they need to do, to be able to put together a bid package for us. So, it's, it's moving forward.
Great, exciting.
Very exciting.
Thank you, Alan. All right, just a couple of items. One, I think, thank you for highlighting, you know, our, our Westboro band and the Fine Arts Program at Westboro. I put in another plug for them. This coming weekend, Friday at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00 or 7:00, Theater Group is doing Guys and Dolls, if you're interested. Second, EDC, Todd Alexander was here earlier, the Chair of the EDC. He mentioned the Year in Review this Friday morning, coming Friday morning at 7:30 AM. If folks have an opportunity, it's really a great chance to celebrate local businesses. And then finally, the Library Building Committee, we met a week before last, I think it was. No, last week. But LPAA did present their work plan for the coming year for schematic design. It would bring us back to annual town meeting in the spring for the next phase in the project. If you're interested in the plan, it is, should be posted on the Town Library website.
Sean, oh, are you done?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Oh, you're done, okay. Before you...
End the meeting, yes.
So, I, sorry, I, I wanted to just acknowledge the, that there are a lot of events going on through May. If you, if folks are interested in the great work of the Fine Arts Department and, and lots of the talent that exists there, through WFAEA.org, there's a schedule of events. But through their newsletter, I learned that a young man here in Westboro, Tim Chen, was chosen to be, to tour with the Crossman Drum and Buell Corps 2023. This is a world-class circuit and he's from Westboro High School. So, kudos and shout out to, to that. And there, there are some videos out there of what they do. It's pretty, pretty amazing. And again, congratulations. We may have mentioned this at our last meeting, but to several Westboro Public Schools for their performance at MICA, for band orchestra and all other, a lot of other performances.
Of course.
Of course, yep. So, kudos. And that's all. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. With that, we will be moving into executive session.
So, we will not be discussing collective bargaining, lease value or exchange of property or litigation with Northland or Westboro Retirement Residences. I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC, and Lax Media Mass LLC, Worcester Superior Court Case, CA Number 2285CV01281. And under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Worcester Land Court 19TL000768. And under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of April 6th, 2023, and April 11th, 2023.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the Board's negotiating and litigating position. The Board will not be reconvening an open session after the executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Who seconded?
You did.
Yeah. I thought Patrick seconded his motion.
I did, I did that once as well.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to say, I wasn't going to say, I wasn't going to say anything, but thank you.
It's been a long... Yeah. I thought it was an echo. I was like, wait a minute.
Roll call, vote?
Johnson, yes.
Penner, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Keough, yes. Thank you to Westboro TV. Good night, everyone.